I call the meeting to order, please. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, Mr. Fred Winham from congregation Beth Hagavat. Thank you for being with us.
Baruch habayim, hearty welcome to you all. As we gather here today in fellowship with one another, we offer thanks to God for the ability to serve our community. We thank God for the trust that the community has placed in us and pray that we can live up to the expectations of leadership. We ask that God guide our decision-making, keeping us cognizant of the need to act not in the best interests of ourselves, but on behalf of the people whom we represent. Please let us ever be mindful of the tasks at hand and prevent us from needless quarrel. Bless our leaders with good health and sound judgment. Bless their families who sacrifice time with their loved ones, that our leaders may better serve Fountain Hills. Bless us all that we may remember we are created in your divine image. Let this knowledge guide our thoughts and actions. May our work here benefit all your children and may we lead with righteousness and integrity. Amen.
Roll call, please, Beth. Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmember Dickey?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Yates?
Present.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Elke?
Here.
And Councilmember LaGee?
Here.
There's just two items that I'd like to present. The first is, I would like to recognize and thank the Citizens Road Bond Committee, the Citizens for Saguaro, headed up by Mayor Jerry Miles and Mr. Bob Thompson, and consisting of a very dedicated group of volunteers. Their objective was to be transparent and relay the facts to the public so that you, the voters, could make an informed decision about the reconstruction of Saguaro Boulevard. The committee's hard work, dedication to the task, personal time involved, and commitment to helping out our town is truly commendable. Thank you for a job well done. And the second item, our own Andrew McGuire, our town attorney, has been elected to a very prestigious position. He is now the president of the Arizona City Attorneys Association. This association consists of all municipal attorneys in the state of Arizona, both in-house attorneys and attorneys representing cities and towns on a contract. One of the functions of the Arizona City Attorneys Association is to discuss current municipal legal issues. Congratulations, Andrew, on your election to president of the ACAA. You thought I was gonna let that go by me, huh? Okay. And now I have a proclamation for McDowell Mountain Month. Whereas the preservation of the McDowell Mountains and the Sonoran Desert has been established as a high priority of the Town of Fountain Hills and its citizens, and whereas it is the desire of the Town of Fountain Hills to celebrate the unique environment of its preserve, and whereas it is also the intent of the Town of Fountain Hills to raise awareness regarding the need to preserve these valuable treasures for future generations, and whereas the first permanent access trail to the preserve has been completed that links the McDowell Mountain Regional Park Dixie Mine Trail to the preserve's northern boundary via the Sonoran Trail. Now therefore, I, Linda M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the Town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby declare the month of November 2013 as McDowell Mountain Month in Fountain Hills and call upon all citizens to take a moment during the month to appreciate the beauty of this community treasure. Thank you. All right. I'm gonna reverse the order of the presentation appearances. We're gonna start off with number three, which is our recognition of Make a Difference Day committee members. Since there are so many here, we're gonna do them first. Are you ready?
Oh, okay.
It's your part.
I'm ready to go. As many of you know, the town recently held its fifth annual Make a Difference Day where the town, with many of its municipal projects and residents in need of assistance with household tasks, cleaning up, landscaping, painting, installation of doors, building a wheelchair ramp, and many other projects, were provided help that was carried out by just under 300 volunteers. It was truly a morning of neighbor helping neighbor, which is one of the reasons Fountain Hills is such a terrific place to live. People care and look after one another. This event requires a community of volunteers and donors in order to be successful. As many of you've heard, Paint the Town Red, myself and my group painted the town green as we painted all the handlebars and fences over by Eagle Mountain Park. I was joined by my wife, who's a Girl Scout leader in the Girl Scout troop, and Julie Wertz, and we had a lot of fun. Mayor, back to you.
Tonight, we'd like to recognize and give thanks for the following vendors who gave their services and donations for Make a Difference Day. They weren't able to be here because they're all working today. Artistic Land Management, ASCO Landscape, Father and Son Carpet and Tile Cleaning, Fountain Hills Cleaning Services, Home Depot, Paul's Ace Hardware, Professional Maintenance Service, Republic Services, Robert Weidman, Roman Empire, Starbucks, Target, Woolworks, First Class Arizona, and Fountain Hills Construction Cleanup. The town is grateful for their generosity of time and service.
Want me to go now?
Yeah, you gotta get up. Okay. Lastly, we would like to acknowledge the commitment and planning that goes into this detailed event by recognizing the Make a Difference Day Planning Committee. These volunteers spent hours during the past several months visiting prospective projects, talking with homeowners, finding professional vendors, locating tools and supplies, and coordinating projects that morning. Will the planning committee please come forward as I introduce you and then stay up here for a picture? Don Zurich, Sandy Larson, Ken Thornton, Lisa Kern, Nita Vlos, Nan Norton, Boyce Baldwin, Joe Nelson, Tom Lawrence, Paul Appledorn, and Mike Chikaron, our very own staff and tech guru. Thank you on behalf of the town for helping to make our community stronger through the Make a Difference Day. Thank you again for the great service you did for the town. Now we will go to presentation by Deputy Town Manager Julie Getty regarding the town's budget report for all funds for the first quarter ending September 30th, 2013.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the first quarterly report for the fiscal year that starts on July 1st. And as this chart shows, the general fund is the town's main operating fund at 77 percent of total resources. Our other operating fund is the HERF, or the Highway User Revenue Fund. Combine those two funds equal 90 percent of the total resources for the town. And again, I'll talk first about the general fund. All of the revenues into the general fund are broken into these categories. State shared revenues equals our income tax and our sales tax. Combined, they equal 38 percent of our revenues. Our local sales tax at 57 percent for a total of 95 percent of our total revenues are from those two sources. The other includes things like program fees, licenses, court fees, permits, et cetera. The local sales tax for the first quarter is almost 4 percent higher than last year. It shows that it's under budget because this is a slow time of the year. We usually see a slow first quarter, but then it picks up as the seasonal residents come into the community. State shared revenues, both income tax and sales tax are higher than last year. The sales tax is 7 percent higher and the income tax is 9 percent higher. On our local sales tax, the total increase over last year is about 3.7 percent. It's backed about the fiscal year '09 level. And again, revenues are typically slower in the first quarter, but the next two quarters it picks up, and this has been historical. At this time last year, we were at 93 percent of the budget. Our retail activity of our local sales tax compared to last year is up 3.4 percent. Percentage-wise, it's higher than the same period last year. Last year, we were at 78 percent of budget; this year, we're at 83 percent. Our restaurant bar activity compared to last year is up about 5.8 percent. Percentage-wise, again, slightly less than last year. Last year, we were at 79 percent of the budget, and this year, we're at 77 percent of the budget for the quarter. Transportation, communications, utilities, that compared to last year is a little bit, slightly less, less than 1 percent higher, and almost exactly the same percentage-wise from last year. Construction activity compared to last year is up 50 percent. It's hard to project because of sales tax, depends on the construction activity, and it doesn't always relate to the building permit activity because we don't know when they come in to get a permit, when they're gonna construct it. And again, it's based on value, and so it's a little bit hard to predict. But last year at this time, we had four building permits, and this past quarter, we've had General fund expenditures, each one of these pies represents a department. Public safety is 53 percent of the budget, and that's police and fire. The community services includes our parks, community centers. Development services includes our building safety, zoning, code enforcement, and facilities. Administration includes our manager, finance, clerk, HR, IT, the volunteer program. Total expenditures of $3.00 million is about 89 percent of the budget for the quarter. I'll touch briefly on the other funds. The town has about 25 separate funds. Except for the general fund, all the other funds are restricted for a specific purpose. This is the Highway User Revenue Fund. This fund gets revenue from two primary sources. One is the HERF revenues, which is shared from the state, and the other one, which is new this year, is the vehicle license tax is now going into the HERF fund for pavement management. Last year at this time, the vehicle license tax was $186,000, and you can see this year, this quarter, it's $205,000. And this chart is of HERF expenditures, and you can see that 78 percent of the HERF budget is allocated to the pavement management program. The revenue for the quarter is about $500,000, but the expenditures are about $900,000, and that's because we're using reserves. We're doing the pavement program really early on in the year. As the year goes on, the revenue from the other sources will catch up to it. Again, these are our restricted funds. The revenue sources are from grants, bond proceeds, dedicated sales tax, and again, they're dedicated for a specific purpose. This is the chart showing the expenditures for those restricted funds, and some of them show no expenditures because those are debt payments that aren't made until December. So in summary, again, the fund balances remain healthy, about $22 million. The general fund revenues are slightly lower than last year, but they're a little bit under budget, but nothing to be concerned about. The expenditures were 6 percent under budget. The pavement management remains a priority, and again, funded through HERF. And our local economic indicators remain positive, which is the retail and restaurant activity. And this is just a summary of our fund balances by fund, and all of them are in, they're over in, sorry, they're invested in government securities, so none of them are at risk. There's $7 million in the local government investment pool, and there's $15 million with our PFM asset management. That's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, thanks, Julie. And Julie and the staff, of course, done always such a great job that it gives me great pleasure to go on to the next section, which is recognition of the Town of Fountain Hills for the 12th consecutive year is receiving the distinguished budget presentation award for fiscal year 1213, budget from the Government Finance Officers Association. Deputy Town Manager Finance Director Julie Getty, NPA CPA, received the certificate of recognition for budget presentation from the GFOA as the individual instrument in their government union achieving a distinguished budget presentation award. Ken? Yeah? Want to say something else?
As usual, with Julie for the last 12 years, it's becoming an old hat for us, but I have to tell you, with the communities that I've been in, they don't give these away. You have to earn them, and we've earned them for 12 straight years, and that's something we should really be proud of, especially with Julie and her staff. Congratulations.
All right, thanks, Julie. Call to the public? Anybody?
No cards, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Consent agenda consists of three items, and I am going to request a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed, 1 to 3.
Mayor, so move.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember LaGee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor 7-0? Regular agenda items, discussion with possible council direction regarding terminating the professional services agreement between the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce and the Town of Fountain Hills. Ken?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, the Town of Fountain Hills approved a professional services contract, services agreement with the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce during the 2013-14 annual budget process this past June in the amount of $103,000. Letter was submitted requesting termination of the agreement by the chamber effective, to be effective December 31st, 2013. Termination of the agreement requires that it be mutual, so that the town council needs to move to accept the termination of this agreement. Staff will carry it forward should you agree to terminate the contract with the necessary paperwork to effectively complete the termination of the agreement itself.
Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Counsel discussion? Councilwoman Yates?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Ken, I'm not sure if this is to you or maybe to the chamber, but do we know, do we have like an accounting of how much has been spent to date, what the carryover balance is, what contracts are still in place, et cetera?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, Councilmember Yates, that was one thing, the discussion with the CEO, that we felt that the termination date should be December 31st because we still have a transition period to close those out to make sure that we can get the accounting of those funds as well.
Madam Mayor, as a follow-up question, are there some annual contracts that might carry over?
To carry forward?
Yes.
Yes, and we will need to be bringing these back to the council to discuss as we go through this transition. Thank you, Mayor.
Discussion?
Mayor? Oh, I was gonna have a commotion. Question first, I guess, if I may, Mayor. With respect to this, I guess this would be directed at the new president at the dais. With the contracts that the chamber may have entered into on behalf of this contract that we had with the chamber, I guess, in part, is there any obligation from what you've seen that the town may have with respect to those contracts?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Elke, we haven't seen any of the contracts to know whether or not there is, there are easy outs for the chamber, but we'll certainly be looking into whether or not the town will continue those. There certainly couldn't be any obligation currently existing, but we may want to take assignment of some of those if they're things that we need to continue.
And Ken, do you have an idea when we're gonna be bringing this item back up for discussion as far as you, I know you presented a memorandum there, a number of questions with respect to the website, and, right, exactly.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, one thing that we're looking at is, we put an outline together so that the chamber and the town could start reviewing these so that we can bring them back as we know more information to the council, hopefully during this 60-day period.
Okay. Anything else? Councilwoman Dickey?
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I was.
I was just gonna ask a question.
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor. The, as we move forward looking for economic development person and not knowing exactly how that's gonna go, do you see this as a big determining factor on what we would be looking for?
It was one of the issues that we would need to talk with the council about in the future.
Okay, we ready for a motion? Go.
If I may, thank you. Move to terminate the professional service agreement as requested by Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce and direct the town manager to implement the transition program. Second.
Okay, and no speaker cards. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consideration of Resolution 2013-26, approving the Town of Fountain Hills, Arizona Town Council Rules of Procedure, amended and restated November 7, 2013.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, the mayor and council approved the rules of procedure. They were revised in last July of 2009. The council indicated an interest in a shorter and more streamlined application process for incumbent commission and board applicants, and as a result, staff incorporated that process into the document and has also worked with the town attorney to complete a comprehensive review of the purpose of the term standardization, removal of redundancy where appropriate, some additional clarification, as well as any necessary text revisions to mirror current practices and processes. So the town, you have approximately 18 that were highlighted, but I know there were many more. And if the council members have any questions regarding any of them, I know the town clerk or the town attorney or myself would be happy to address any. We are seeking the resolution approval of the council rules of procedure tonight. However, you know, again, if there are any revisions that you want to see from what is being recommended, we ask that they be vetted tonight and determine what you want to see, and we'll bring it back at a future meeting for approval.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
No, Mayor.
No, we don't, okay. Any discussion? Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. I try not to be excruciating about this, but I actually have a general question about the inclusion of committees to be subjected to all of these rules and regulations, and I was thinking back to some of the things that we ever did, centennial committees and things like that. And I also wanted to bring that up because we have spoken about commissions and the need for staff and minutes and all of those things that have to happen when we have these kind of meetings. So will there be, or is there a definition of committees where, maybe if it's an ad hoc committee or something like that, where this wouldn't, they wouldn't have to have all of these stipulations, I guess that's the word, for them?
It sounds like an Andrew question.
I'd be happy to take that one, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Dickey, the ones that are listed in the council rules are the ones that we're typically talking about, the standing committees, and those that are not regularly meeting that are already in here are the ones that are mostly intended to be. However, it doesn't mean that if there's an official subcommittee appointed by the council that's more ad hoc, it still is gonna be governed by all of the rules of procedure and the open meeting law, as long as it's an official appointed committee of the council. So the intent is for the ones who are listed here, if it's an ad hoc committee, I doubt they'll be going through this formal procedure, but the idea was to try and standardize what everybody was doing, and that was the overall theme in that particular set of revisions.
Thank you. Mayor?
Anything else?
Like, just several things. I don't know if you want me to do it that way or not, it's not that bad, but I just had some questions, even some of them were, you got your pen? I have a question about how that agenda item that lets us add an agenda item for next time. We had some discussion about that in the past. I think it's 4.2B, something like that. So can somebody, like, say at the end of this meeting, when we get to that agenda item, could somebody say, at that point, I would like an agenda item to be about, you know, the fountain or something, or the lake, or fill in the blank? Or is it a two-step process? Because I remember when we talked about this in the past, it was, you had to go ahead of time, then it would be written in the agenda item, and then you'd kind of have this sort of feeling on whether it was okay with everybody that it would be in an agenda. But can you actually do it at the meeting? Like, could we, at that agenda item today, could somebody say, hey, I'd like to talk about the Fourth of July, or something like that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dickey, the reason that, well, let's start with the agenda to begin with. The council is not allowed to discuss as a group anything that's not properly agendized 24 hours in advance. So that item is certainly not for the purpose of introducing something at that point. The reason that that exists is because when you have a process that requires three council members, or the mayor, or the manager, to put something on the agenda, there's always a chance that someone would be disenfranchised if there were only two members or one member. And that agenda item is intended to be able to be put on there for a discussion on whether or not there's sufficient support on the council to give it the time and energy necessary to go forward. It's meant to be a vetting process to ensure that before things are on the agenda, that there's sufficient support from all of you before your very limited staff goes out and does the work necessary to properly present it for you. So that was the idea, is that if only one person was in support of something and two other people weren't even saying yes, put on the agenda, that there's still a place for that item where they can, for lack of a better term, rally support for it, to try and get it placed on a future agenda, fully vetted with a staff report and everything else.
So Mayor, Andrew, you can actually do that then at the time of the meeting, but you can't discuss it, but you can try to convince. It's just like a hard thing to, like, play one out for me.
It still wouldn't be at the time of the meeting. It would still have the requirements to be on the agenda 24 hours in advance. That's an absolute requirement for anything you all are gonna discuss. And that's the reason why during the call to the public, you're not allowed to have a discussion with the person who comes to the microphone, because there's no way to agendize that. There's no way for a person picking up the agenda to know what you're gonna talk about. So the same goes for this item on the agenda. It allows for discussion of it just for the purpose of, do we want to put this on a later agenda? And it was meant to prevent someone from being completely disenfranchised if they were the lone vote on the council.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thanks, yeah. The Section 5.2, which is about regular meetings, and it talks about the call to the public. I felt like it was saying a call to the public, somebody would add, if they didn't want to speak, that they would say for or against. It's 5 point, sorry, I'm getting all these things mixed up, 5.2D, I think, where it says, it's a non-agenda item. So why would you say if you're for and against something if it's not on? So, why would you say if you're for and against something if it's not on the agenda? Five point two two. D.
I'm going to toss the buck on that one to the town clerk.
Do you see what I mean? Where it's all in the blue, where it says speaker card submitted by those. It's on page eleven. Mayor, and it says, so it's, it's under the D, which is called the public, but isn't that by definition a non-agenda item?
Well, that's those cases where you'd have a group of people here and they're all going to talk on the same thing.
Oh, okay.
So, if you're going to have a number of cards where they want to say they're for or against, and they're not, they're not willing to speak, then I would just give you a total of those people that were there who were whatever the people were talking about.
Okay, Mayor.
Just like usually count them up and say, well, they don't want to speak, but there's ten, four, and five against
the issue, just so we know as far as what they. But Mayor, I guess if, how would, how would we know if it was a call to the public? In other words, because they're going to write down what the subject is, even though it's not an agenda item?
Yeah, I, I think the two words that are causing you trouble are proposed agenda item. If proposed an agenda weren't there, and it was just relating to the item as indicated on the card, then that makes more sense for call the public.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just up on C, right above that, where it says council members may use scheduled public appearances, presentations section to provide an update of official activities as listed on the posted agenda. What does that little last phrase mean, as listed on the posted agenda? That, that particular agenda?
Sometimes there are those places that you go to and you know that you want to present something, so if you want to give the public advanced notice of this, this gives you an opportunity to list it, and then it's agendized and we'll talk about it, and then people might come up for that discussion.
Okay, great, perfect. I'm sorry, I'm almost done. E, it says E four.
E four should be D four.
Thank you.
I looked at that one and.
You robbed me of my point.
It's just misplaced. It's in the wrong section.
Thank you. Do you know what she, what he means?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the last question is, so, and probably to Andrew, we're not going to be able to amend amendments anymore? Is that something that it's too confusing to do?
It's actually something that's been part of the, the practice for quite a long time, and we're just putting it in writing now that we vote on what's on the floor and then you amend it after that, instead of amend and amend and amend, because it really gets too far down the line. It's in line with, with the, the rules of order that you've adopted, adopted by default. It's just now making it clear that that's the way it works.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Vice Mayor Hanson?
I kind of did the same thing Ginny did, so I'll just, and they're more curiosity questions, like, you know, why did we make this change? Or why was that? And I'm using the red line in the, that version, so I can use page numbers. It's quicker.
Okay.
So, on page one, there was a sentence added to one point two, and I was just kind of curious, because as I was reading through that, this is if both the mayor and the vice mayor are gone, and it says, if a majority of the council members present are unable to agree on a presiding officer for the meeting, the meeting shall automatically be adjourned. And I just wondered why we were adding that, because it made it sound like we're kind of dysfunctional that five people couldn't decide on a person to run the meeting, and so I wondered why we were adding that.
I will, I'll be happy to answer that one, because Bev's not going to.
That one's yours.
Vice Mayor Hanson, that was exactly the reason for it. Because if the group that's here is unable to even decide who's going to chair the meeting, maybe that's not the best time to have a council meeting that night. And I've actually seen this happen one time, so that's.
But certainly not here.
Not here.
No.
Definitely not here.
Okay.
Sadly, all of the things in here are experience based.
Yes, it's going vice experience.
All right, see, we're learning new things here. Let's see, jumping over to page six, I had kind of just marked the thing about, you know, having to have the three council people. I brought that up before that I still think that's kind of cumbersome, and I wish we didn't have that, but it is what it is. On page seven, a change was made, well, earlier on, I guess on page six, it says the town manager is, is authorized or, or his authorized designee shall prepare the agenda, so he's kind of in charge of doing that. And then on page seven, we added, if somebody wants to schedule a public appearance, it used to be that they would just submit their application to the town manager. Now we're adding the mayor, and I just wondered why we were adding another level. And I, so on, well, this is kind of fun.
Okay, this one's going to Bev.
This, this came about, keep in mind that this hasn't been updated since 2009. And these were things that I was keeping track of that was bothering council members. And at one point in time, they didn't like the idea of the manager being the one who was able to take and say yea or nay to someone from the public asking for something to be placed on the agenda. So, at that point, they asked that it be a two-part, where the manager and the mayor were the ones that approved it. So, that's why it's here. If it's not something that the council desires, it can be removed.
No, I'm just, because it kind of almost sets up a scenario maybe that what if there were one or two other council people that were going, whoa, we want to see that presentation?
I would think that would fall under the rule of the three. Then it would come forward.
How would we know that?
I'm sure the public would come and actually talk to you.
And what if, Mayor, just, what if the mayor agreed and the town manager said no?
We would let them work that out.
Well, that one actually is simple, because the mayor has the authority to put something on the agenda.
So, is there a need for that additional level then, if the mayor in the previous red line version had the ability to put it on anyway, as well as three council members? Is there a need to throw that in there? Since there's the appeal process anyway for citizens, they can get to the mayor, get to three council members, no matter what, anyway.
Mayor, councilmember Elk, you know, it's up to the council. This is a policy decision.
I think you're just trying to cover everything. You're trying to outlawy the lawyer, right, on this?
No, just bringing forward everything that had been asked for in the past.
Yeah, and as I was reading a lot of these changes, it seemed like a lot of things we've been doing anyway, and you're just actually writing down what we've been doing, pretty much our own practice.
Mayor, correct.
Mayor.
Yes.
Okay, how about?
Go ahead, that's all right.
I'm sorry.
I was going to dovetail on that.
Oh, that's okay.
Before you went to another one. That, that, that was also one I, I checked off, and the town attorney just mentioned something really interesting. He said that the mayor has the authority to put something on the agenda, and that's part of our policy, and I agree with that. However, when you really look at this, this is determining that something should not go on the agenda, which is very different than the mayor determining something to go on the agenda. And I have a real process issue with this, and, and the reason being is this, is that on A, it says submission to the town manager and the mayor. And then it comes down on B, and it says if the town manager and the mayor can agree, and they agree to take something off the agenda, I, as a council member, would not be aware that it was taken off of the agenda, because I wasn't part of that discussion. And therefore, it would be very hard for me to lobby two other council members to have that put on the agenda. The other thing is that I feel very comfortable with the town manager making that decision. And if you get someone from a political body making the decision, I'm concerned, no disrespect to you, Mayor, I've seen this happen in the past, that that could be political. So, I would advocate that it's academic having that there. It creates confusion, and that it should be basically removed. And if it's not, then I would suggest A reads as follows. Return with respect to the public appearance presentation forms, town clerk, when completed, return to, to the town clerk for submission to the town manager and all council members. In other words, if you want to remain having the mayor and the town manager make the decision to determine to have it on the agenda or not, that's absolutely fine with me. But I want to be in loop, because if there's a negative there, there's no way that I would know that someone approached whomever through this presentation form, and it was a decision made here not to go there. So, how could then I go through the process and initiate lobbying to other council members to get it back on? So, it's, 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 I don't think it's necessary, first of all. I think it's worked well without that statement in there. And if it is in there, then it presents a process issue for me. It's a due process issue, frankly. Thank you.
Andrew, do you want to comment on that?
Madam Mayor, I, I think that the solution is, and there are two ways to handle it. Either we revert the language to what it was, which means that if someone is rejected by a town manager, they have the opportunity to ask for the request be forwarded to the mayor for consideration, or obtain the request, the permission of three council members. And that's the way that it was written before. Or, just to add the language, the councilmember Leger, Leger added here to say and all council members means that the notification would happen, and then the language below eliminates the due process problem. Either one, I think, addresses the concern without changing the process that we've been using. I'm, I'm fine with either way.
I think we don't need to reinvent things. I think making the language, if the town manager determines that the subject should not be placed on the agenda, an individual wishing to have an item on the agenda as scheduled public appearance may, and then leave subsection I in there that's redlined out. Leave that in there where you can, the request can be forwarded to the mayor for consideration, or to three council members. I think that makes it easy where you don't have to add that extra in.
So, revert back to what we had previously for those paragraphs?
That would be my recommendation.
Anyone else have a comment on this?
That particular thing?
Yeah, on that particular. Yes.
How should we handle this as far as, do you want to just take notes down if there seems to be a consensus, or does it need to be more formal?
What I think I'll do is, after we get through all of the, the recommended changes, we'll then go back and address them to see if you want to have consensus on a particular one that I didn't see. Like this one, we'll come back to, but let's plow through and see if that's a list of one, or three, or ten.
Did you have another item?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
On page ten, regarding the scheduled public appearances and presentations, I'd like to see somehow if we can either limit the presentations or have a better control over the time. We've had some occasions now where our regular meeting doesn't start until, hasn't started until 7:30. And for any of the public that comes, you know, for something on the business part of the agenda, and they're, they have an hour of presentations to sit through, or and it, it just seems like we might have a better handle on that, so the public will know what to expect. Like, you know, they, they could come later if they knew there were going to be a lot of presentations. And then also the possibility of, depending on what they, they were, possibly even starting the meeting earlier for presentations, kind of like we do on special meetings or like that. But I just wanted to throw that out there to see if anybody else had any thoughts on, sometimes it seems like the presentations go way into the meeting.
Yeah, I guess it's just hard sometimes for me to even, I mean, if, if somebody's got to do a PowerPoint, then it's going to be longer, but it's probably going to be something that's really interesting that probably everybody who's watching, you know, would, would want to see, as opposed to just someone coming up and doing a simple presentation. So, I don't know. I think it would be hard to limit as far as saying, you know, all presentations can only be this amount of time, if that's what you're suggesting.
Well, or maybe limit how many there are at each meeting, so that, you know, we'd establish a calendar and say there will be no more than, and certainly some presentations are short.
Yeah.
But then the ones that are longer, and somehow just kind of keep a little bit more even.
Sometimes we kind of run out of months with all of the presentations. You know, we've got all the utilities want to come on a regular basis, and then we want to invite, you know, G-PAC and MAG, and, and sometimes it becomes difficult to have enough meetings to actually get everybody in, which is, I think, that's why lately we've been, you know, having, you know, two and three. And of course, I, I like to do the presentations whenever there's an award for anybody from the staff. I don't see how we could, we could.
But those are generally short.
But you know, I mean, how, what are you, are you suggesting we do two presentations or three, or what?
I think what I'm suggesting, I just wanted to see if anybody else kind of felt the same way that some, sometimes it just seems like they're scheduled, they're just too long, together. And there's got, and I'm, you know, I don't have a solution. I'm just kind of throwing it out there.
I think pretty much Bev kind of looks at the presentations when they come up and tries to look at the whole calendar and put them out as best she can, because sometimes we have quite a few, and it might mean dropping some of them off. I mean, I don't have a problem with just generally looking at it. I'm not sure I'd like to exactly set how many we're going to have, because then, you know, if we get, Bev, did you want to clarify that?
Do you want to maybe consider limiting the time? Say you have twenty minutes for just that one section on the agenda? And then we'll try to figure it out, you know, how many of their presentations would fit into that section per meeting?
And then you could kind of rotate who else, who has a PowerPoint presentation as opposed to who has just a simple presentation? Is, is that? Is that what you're kind of thinking, or what do you think about that?
Anything that would just maybe make it a little tighter.
A little tighter, okay.
If I may. I liked Bev's suggestion, maybe the first thirty minutes, no more, you know, all presentations would be done, perhaps during the first thirty minutes of the meeting, or thirty minutes time period for, for presentations. And maybe, you know, sometimes I think some of them do go a little bit long, and I think staff having that ability to say you you have like fifteen minutes for your presentation to do that, because that is a long time. And I think, you know, maybe ten minutes for that presentation. So, to, to pare that down, so maybe we have a, a max amount, and then, you know, this, of course, can be fluid. It doesn't have to be hard and fast, but yes, maybe ten minutes for the presentation, even if it's a PowerPoint to get through it, and then, so we can get, get into the meetings. But I agree with you, Cassie, about that.
Mayor, if I, if I may chime in. My intent here is not to be arbitrary, unfortunately. I have some history with this, and we've run into that before when, in terms of what Bev is suggesting, in terms of managing the time, you'll have someone say, well, I only had ten minutes. And that person, two weeks ago, had fifteen minutes. I mean, Bev, you've run into that. We've run into that, particularly with large, large groups. Historically, I think we've used fifteen minutes as the cap for a presentation, encouraging people to do it in ten minutes and encouraging fifteen minutes. And frankly, the presentations, we've heard recently, some of these things have gone on for twenty minutes. And there's not an issue with that. I don't want to shut people down. However, if we have that presentation ahead of time in our packet, we see the bulk of the information, and frankly, someone needs to be able to market their scenario in ten or fifteen minutes. And if we start getting, you can have ten, you can have fifteen, that has come back to haunt us in, in the past. So, I, I think, I, I think managing the amount of presentations we have, Cassie and, and Mayor, is, is part of the issue. But I don't think there's an issue with having an arbitrary number on, on a presentation. I mean, historically, ten minutes should, should work, or fifteen minutes. That's arbitrary, however, I've seen it work in the past.
Bev, do you, do you have any other suggestions? I'm just, I'm just concerned about some of the, you know, some of the Cox communications coming in, or, you know, we invite somebody down for Phoenix like G-PAC, and they come all the way down here to, and they want to make their case for us staying with G-PAC, and we say to them, you only have ten minutes. I, I think that, you know, the way Bev works it now is she kind of looks at the whole, the whole year and what's coming up, and she tries to put in some of the larger ones with some of the shorter ones, and if it's a long presentation, sometimes that's the only one that's there. I'd, I'd rather more just look at it and try to work it in-house that way, rather than make a fast rule that says you can't go over this amount of time, because I don't want to shut anybody down, especially if it's a citizen presentation. I want to make sure that they know that, who, who?
Just wait until you're done.
Okay. I just, I, I don't want to shut anybody down. I want to make sure that everybody who does a presentation feels that they are satisfied with the amount of time they have, and it was reasonable.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, a lot of the things in the council rules are guidelines, more than hard and fast rules. They're, it shall, it should be, you know, and otherwise. I would scribbling as we were talking that maybe we should make this one of those provisions that is a shall endeavor, and that the manager shall endeavor to ensure that scheduled presentations are limited to fifteen minutes individually, thirty minutes collectively for any council meeting. Is that?
Vice Mayor?
Perhaps in the case of, like the example you gave regarding G-PAC,
if they were coming to make their case to stay in our budget, the time for them to come to do that would be during the budget meetings, rather than just come sometime during the year and make a presentation and say, we're wonderful.
Well, we fight with them. Well, we fight with them. Yes.
I would suggest maybe perhaps 10, 10 minutes for the meetings. I like the recommendation, Andrew, the shall endeavor to make the meetings 10 minutes because then that gives staff, town manager and Bev opportunity to say that this is what the council would like to, to have happen, so it carries some force. And then if they want to ask for more additional time, certainly consulting with Bev and Ken. I think confident that they can make the decision there, but I think 10 minutes to give your presentation is more than enough time to do that. And if they need additional time because it's a particularly onerous subject, that maybe then they can ask for additional time in that situation.
Anyone else want to comment on this?
Mayor, if I may, I, I would be on board once again, whether it's 10 or 15. As I stated earlier, I don't want to be arbitrary, I don't want to shut anyone off, but I think the way the town attorney has suggested it, the flexibility goes to the, to the chair. And I, I think that works out. And, you know, the G-PAC presentation was excruciating long. And there was just stuff in there that, you know, we could just review online. And, and basically, it was, it was a marketing presentation, they were marketing to us and I, I just don't think that was, was necessary. Nonetheless, I think that thing went on for a half hour or so, but I would concur with what our town attorney is suggesting, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, do you have another item?
I'm, I'm, some of them are really quick.
Okay, go ahead.
And this is a Peg Tibbetts one. It's on page 13 and it's the fourth line down. After included, I think we need a preposition, as Peg would say. It says, and page 13, the fourth line down from the top.
Peg's change is duly noted. Preposition in.
Preposition in. Okay, and quickly moving to page 18. And this is just kind of a, a quick one too, since we're deleting, you know, where people give their address. This is page 18, 66A1. I'm wondering if it would be good to add on the front of the agenda where it says, "Rules for addressing the council," that we just add that they, they give their residence status. Because we're, we're adding in here whether or not they're a town resident. So maybe if we included that on the front of the agenda so they would know. And then you wouldn't have to tell them not their street address anymore. And-
And hope, and hope they read it.
Right. Oh, okay, on page 23, 7.9, "The non-statutory conflicts of interest." We're removing the last sentence. And Andrew, I, it, after I read the new last sentence, however, subsection above, "Encourages participation in the decision-making process unless the matter involves a statutory conflict of interest set forth by state law." That paragraph kind of left me like, well, so if it's not a statutory reason, but we're supposed to be fairly diligent, how do we know if we should declare or not? So I, I didn't know if we needed just some sort of a little, like a final sentence to give a little bit more direction on how we're supposed to decide. Because it says we have to vote on every issue. So, but if we feel like we have a little conflict, but it's not statutory, there's kind of that gray area. Should we or should we not declare or vote or?
Right, and Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, there, the deletion here was a deletion to just get rid of a redundancy. So we weren't really intending to change anything, it was just trying to get rid of some stuff that didn't belong there. But in practice, what we've done is if you think it's even close or you're uncomfortable, declare. And we probably talked about it before the meeting and I'll tell you, well, that is or is not. And if it's not, you can still say, well, I'm not going to vote, I know what's going to happen with my vote and refrain from, from actually participating. It's just, if it's a non-statutory conflict, the rules really encourage you to vote. And I think that's, that's why we removed it here is that it, it was putting the mandatory provision back in in the non-statutory one where it already existed in another area.
Well, and I, and I can see the issue that kind of comes up is someone might say, well, I have conflict of interest because they didn't really want to vote on that particular thing.
Yeah, and that's really what the rule's intended to do is to prevent folks from just abstaining from a vote that's uncomfortable.
Yes, okay, anything else?
Yes, quick, 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 quick. Oh, on page 25, well, actually, because it was, these are the two pages that cover the code of ethics. And, you know, over the years, we've heard concerns that this doesn't have any teeth in it. And, excuse me, so while I was kind of looking at it, is there, our whole procedural rules tell us how to do things, they tell, but this is the one section where it doesn't tell us what to do. So just a scenario, if there were a couple or three council people that felt that, you know, we really think we have a problem here, but we don't know what to do about it and this doesn't give us any idea of what we could possibly do if we feel that somebody's really kind of stepped over a line somewhere. I mean, I know it's a little, you know, it's a little uncomfortable, but it makes you-
What are you talking about?
He said there's a story for everything, so I figure there's-
There is a story for this one, unfortunately. We've got that 10-minute rule now, so I'm not going to go into it. We have, we have a, a number of different things that play into this. And as you'll remember from, I guess it would be, it'd be the first time that I recall that there was a request to censure amongst the council members was several mayors ago. And we went through the process then of trying to determine what authority you all have to censure one another and came to the conclusion that you don't have much, that the only authority to censure is in the voters. And their authority to censure is in the power of recall, so, or at the ballot box if you're up for election. So we really, in this section, when it came up the first time, tried to stay away from any, what do we do next provisions? Because nobody likes the answer, what do we do next? Because you don't really have any authority to do much. These questions come up in other communities, even in charter cities, and unless it's built into the charter that there's a specific censure that voters have given, you don't really even have authority there. So we've, we went round and round in this and I know Scottsdale actually amended their charter on this provision after we had that discussion. So it's intentional, but it's not there because you don't really have anything you can do.
Of course. All these rules and no way to, you know, slap your hand or send you to the principal or something.
Well, you certainly know that from past experience, the council can talk about it and there's the public discussion and, and that turns out to be the kind of censure that you have the authority to do.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
Real quick, real quick. Page 29, under the advertisement contents, when we're advertising for boards and commissions. Number eight says that the ad shall include tentative interview dates. I think that was probably put in there when the council always did this in conjunction with a regularly scheduled council meeting. So it was pretty, you'd have a pretty good idea of when the interview dates would be. But now that we do it with, with committees, it's very flexible and it can be whenever the council people are available. So I just thought maybe that one could just come out because it's, doesn't really apply.
Yeah, you know, it's something that we don't use, we can just take it out. Anybody have a problem with that? Okay.
Okay, real quick, I'm 32. I'm sorry. I'm going fast, I'm going fast. Okay, page 32, under removal of commissioners or board members. And it just says that the council members, for any cause, we're taking out reasonable, but we're still saying for any cause. And it just kind of seems, that's another one of those areas. It's like, well, we don't like the way you cut your hair anymore, so we're going to remove you from this commission. So I just wondered if there was any way to just add a little bit of something, direction, so people would know that, well, I don't want to do this because I could be removed for cause.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, this is one of those areas where the experience has been that councils want to go the other direction and have given me direction in other communities to remove reasonable. Because if four council members come to the council meeting and decide they, it's removal time for someone, a lot of times it's something uncomfortable they don't really want to say. And so they'd rather just come with their four together and say, you're done. Kind, kind of like with my representation, if four of you showed up angry one night, you know, I don't like your haircut, you're out of here. I think that that is not necessarily meant as a way to not tell somebody why they were removed for cause, but is a way for them to spare embarrassment for the person who's being removed for cause. And, and that's what it's come up in the two other circumstances when we came back to it and council members said, I don't ever want to go through that again, get rid of that word. And so we carried that through to your rules as well.
Okay, one last thing, just in this, because I was wondering-
Well, just on that though, could it be used the other way though then? That people could remove someone without actually giving a cause? And maybe that's not justified? Maybe they don't really have a good cause?
Well, but Madam Mayor, the majority of the council appoints and can remove, there really isn't any hindrance on that under state law or otherwise. So creating cause is something that is up to your discretion. So whether or not you allow for that is, is up to the council. I'm just relaying why the change was made.
Yeah, yeah, I can see your point though about the reasonable, yeah.
Okay, just one more. The residency requirements for our boards and commissions, only the planning and zoning and board of adjustment have to be residents of the town. The other ones say they should be members of the town or residents, but they don't have to be. And I just wondered, and there's no change there, but in reading through, I just wondered why we wouldn't want, require everybody to be a resident.
That was actually the only one there that I had, I had marked too, for discussion, yeah.
It's your discretion.
Well, I thought there might have been a reason at one time, but-
Well, and this, this provision, I can tell you, came from, I don't remember if it was Goodyear or Avondale who came up with it first, but one of them did and the other one copied the other one. They have really large areas of unincorporated but surrounded by municipality. People who have a vested interest in what goes on in the community but have no way of participating in if they're not residents. So they were open to allowing those folks to participate in small numbers to provide input that they felt was valuable, never a majority, but they could allow for that. And that's where that provision came from. It wasn't really intended, crafted to Fountain Hills circumstances because you really don't, you don't have that group of folks around.
Well, and it would seem like the appointed people should be residents. And, you know, there is a provision that you can have an additional person help serve on the committee or commission or whatever, they just wouldn't vote.
Yeah.
So if we had any kind of situation like that. But I think, I think it's a good idea that they need to be residents.
I would agree with the Vice Mayor on this one. Anyone else? Comments?
My two cents on that is if there's a unique situation where somebody has a certain amount of expertise in a certain field and has an interest in this, whether it be valley-wide, statewide, I would kind of enjoy having someone like that at the table, being on some of these boards, although I concur, having a vested interest is more important than anything. But sometimes some of these boards, it would be advantageous to have somebody at the table. I know at one time when we were going through the numerous sign meetings, we had theoretically an expert who was in that industry. Turned out they were trying to sell signs, but nevertheless, they had, you know, some facts and figures that were helpful to that group, food for thought.
Well, I, as Vice Mayor said, you can still be on as an advisory capacity, but that only residents really should be the ones that, that vote. So I would agree with you on that.
I would concede.
I'm done.
Okay, okay, that was good, excellent. Any, anyone else?
Mayor, if I may, quickly, if everyone is done with the specifics on, on the procedure, I just kind of have a general question. And, and it's appropriate, I think, in this agenda item. You know, we have rules of decorum and it's clearly stated in, in our policy, in our revised policy that, you know, be it call of the public or agenda items, that residents address the presiding officer. That means that they're directing the mayor. They're not specifically directing angst that they have with a specific council member or calling out a particular council member. We've had that occur in, in the past, more so in the past than, than the recent past. In addition to that, what has occurred is that we have had dialogue going back and forth between the deists and people sitting, sitting out there, kind of getting into like debate types of scenarios where the person has had their three minutes or how much time you give them and you're very gracious with the time and, and they're out there and they're, it gets into a debate. Frankly, as a group facilitator, I don't have an issue with that, but it violates rule of decorum. So my question is, when those incidents occur and they have occurred, is it the parliamentarian's responsibility to bring things back to order? Or is it the presiding officer's responsibility to bring back to order? Because there's been instances of that where things are not being brought back to order. So Andrew, could you answer that question?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Legay, the, the parliamentarian's job is to interpret questions of order as they come up, but running the meeting is certainly through the chair, whoever that is, whether it's the mayor, whether it's the committee chairman, whoever that person is has the, the job of really enforcing the rules. Because frankly, someone who's not elected shouldn't be telling elected folks, if, if the rule is violated by one of you, I shouldn't be the one telling you all it's a problem unless there's some, a legal problem with it, frankly.
I, I appreciate that and understand that, I just wanted, I just want to clarify that. So clearly it's the presiding officer's responsibility to, to bring that to order. And if for some reason the presiding officer is, is not doing that, can a council person step up and mention that we have an issue with the rules of order? Is that appropriate? As long as I'm addressing the presiding officer when, when, when I'm doing that, thank you.
Except I've had, never had a problem with maintaining order and I do like to exercise my discretion when it comes to the citizens to give them the opportunity to express themselves. If people start debates out there, I can ask them to quiet down, but I certainly like to give everybody the opportunity to express themselves. I don't want to start telling residents what they can and cannot say. At this meeting, I give everybody the opportunity to express however they would like to as long as they're not being rude or unruly in any way. I in no way am going to stop people from debating or however they want to express themselves. Some people, some people get a little excited when they get up to the podium. I can tell when some people are a little extra nervous and they have a little hard time expressing themselves. I like to be patient and, and let them make their point. I think that when you stop people from making their point because you think that they're being too loud or, or they're not expressing it in the way that you would want to, I, I think that, that makes the resident feel that we are not listening to them. And I've never had a problem with a resident being out of control here, so.
Mayor, if I, if I may, and I'm not sure you're putting words in my mouth, but I, that was not my statement. My statement is that I have observed rules of order being violated while you have been mayor. I, I didn't want to go there, but seeing that you went on your diatribe and mentioned that. And I simply wanted to know if I can step in and say that there's an issue with that? Because there clearly have been and I can go back on videotape and indicate when someone has come up to speak, they've put their piece in, we've had our discussion and they, they're, they're then debating with us from the audience. By no means am I saying that I want to shut anyone down. I'm simply saying we have rules of decorum and we're either going to follow them or we're not going to follow them. It's, it's that simple. And there have been times when people have come up here while you have been mayor that have read a statement directed at a specific council member and that person was not directing it through you and they should have been and that wasn't corrected and that has happened. So this is not about shutting anyone down. I'm a firm believer in high involvement governance. I'm just simply trying to clarify what my role is as a council member when I observe that. And the town attorney clearly says that I can make the chair aware of that. And that is not shutting you down or them down, thank you.
Well, I have had this discussion with our town attorney before and I do have quite a bit of discretion on certain issues when people do come up to speak. have quite a bit of discretion on certain issues when people do come up to speak, time-wise and other issues. And I will continue to do that, to give every resident the opportunity to express themselves however they feel that it's necessary for them to do it. As long as they, excuse me, as long as they are not being unruly, as long as they are coming up to the podium and they are, I have, I have quieted people down in the audience on both sides of issues. When people started clapping, I try to do it in as gentle a way as I possibly can because people do get emotional about situations. And sometimes by shutting people down, it just tends to incite the issue rather than to calm it. All right, can we, is there any other comment on this issue?
I do have another, I do have another comment. My comment is, if you read our rules of decorum, it states specifically how a presiding officer should deal with that. And if, in fact, that's the way you want to write the rules of decorum regarding that, then we need to change some things in here. People need to come through the chair, not directly criticizing the, the, they can criticize the town attorney through the chair, they can criticize myself through the chair, but that has not happened. And when the presiding officer gives someone permission to start, you know, talking back and forth from the audience, that certainly is not part of our rules of decorum. Discretion-wise, if, if you choose to invite them back to the podium to, to say more, that's fine, but we have had dialogue going back and forth. That's simply what I'm saying. And every time I comment on that, you seem to go off on a tangent and put words in my mouth. I'm simply saying, reading the rules of decorum, they have been violated, and if you're not comfortable with it, then we need to change the rule of decorum. That's it. And, and this is respectfully.
All right. And again, I'll just say that I have a certain amount of discretion in running the meeting and I will continue to run the meeting in the best way that I can to give every resident the right to say whatever they want to say, as long as they are not being unruly or rude to anyone. Of course, if they want to come up and make a statement that sounds rude to somebody and it's interpreted that way, the resident still has a right to come up and say something, so...
And that's absolutely, Mayor, not what I'm saying. So, I guess in the past, when I noticed that someone is out of order with respect to our rules of decorum, which is our policy, I didn't write it. I'm not splitting hairs, then I will certainly bring that to the chair's attention. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other issues related to the item we're discussing? Okay. Andrew, do you want to sum this up or do you want to go from here?
I'd be happy to, because I think we have everything in some form of, of an amendment that I can read back to you, except for the one issue that I need to have you all give me direction on, which is in 4.2B4. And that was, there were two different ways to go. One was to add language, add all council members in subsection A of that, or the other was just to revert subparagraphs A and B back to their original form. And either one is fine, we can do that, not much trouble at all, just not one way or the other. And that was relating to the...
Councilman Yates?
It sounded from just the discussion, I think we want to put it back to the way it was, as opposed to adding more language.
I agree with that.
All right. All right, and I can go through all of our changes here and the motion can include those changes and we can be done. All right. Madam Mayor, the changes that I have noted are the one that we just spoke about, the reversion in 4.2B to the original language in subsections A and B thereof. We have the change to 5.2C, the additional language that the town manager shall endeavor to limit the total time for such presentations to 10 minutes individually or 30 minutes per council meeting collectively. In 4.2E, subsection four is being moved to D where it should have been in the first place. That's my error, apologize for that. And I'm not sure if we'll actually have a text change, but the direction is duly noted to add somewhere to the front of the agenda, the, the direction to folks to just give your resident yes or no, rather than giving your, your address. And the last one, actually, two more. In 9.2C, we're going to get rid of the tentative interview dates on the notification to, on the advertisement for the council boards and commission advertisement. And then in that same area, we're going to change the requirement for boards and commission members to be all resident, is what I've heard. And that's it.
Okay. Can I get a motion on those if we're in agreement?
Mayor, if I may, I have a comment of town attorney, please. Andrew, given that the change was made on 4.2, that Councilman Yates kind of aligned us with Councilman Elke's suggestion, is there an implication in that that is going back to the way it was, that 5.2C needs to change? I need your opinion on that, where it says town manager and the mayor.
On page 11.
Yeah, Councilman Eljé, I think that is correct, that because those two paragraphs are tied together, that the changes would be in both areas.
Absolutely. I just wanted to make, there's a connection there. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, before you make a motion, just a general comment, since you said these are guidelines, but they are what we have to deal with as our guidelines. So, I think if we're going to take the time that we have to go through this, and obviously all the time you did to put into this, that these are legitimate guidelines or rules that, and procedures that we should follow. So, just because of the way the conversation went, I would hate to think we were putting all this effort into something that we weren't all going to do our best to follow. So, that's what I want to say. But I don't have the motion because there's too much, it's too complicated.
Thank you, Councilman Elke.
Motion to approve resolution 2013-26 to include the additions and changes detailed by the town attorney a few moments ago.
Second.
Did we get any speaker cards or anything while we were doing that? No?
No, Mayor.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
All right. We are now on number six. And we're going to go to Councilmember Dickey on this, discussion with possible direction to staff to explore submitting applications for one or more awards of recognition in the area of environmental excellence and regional partnerships.
Thank you, Mayor. The, I didn't want to do a PowerPoint or do anything like that. That's why all of these websites are listed here.
10 minutes. 10 minutes.
10 minutes. Put my New York voice on. Basically, you know, I know, obviously, we are, we have a lot of constraints on staff and things like that. But over the years, as I've seen these awards and attended them, particularly the Valley Forward, which is now Arizona Forward, I've seen opportunities that we could be participating in some of these things. So, basically, I wanted to just give you the program and the announcement that was from Valley Forward because that gives you the, the good idea of one that's, that's very famous and, and well-attended and all of those kind of things. And, you know, we, we look at gathering up this information and probably since, you know, five or so years ago, we, we started making some changes. We have an environmental planner, we, we, we have quite, in a, a list of accomplishments that we've taken in this town that relate to that. So, it, and, but the biggest, of course, being that we have the curbside recycling and, and the way that the trucks are only once, once a week and that kind of thing. There are a lot of, of items and assessments that, that Republic will, will have agreed to help us, so they can, for example, tell us what our diversion rate has been and maybe the, the air that we've saved by not having as many trucks and all these other things. So, basically, I think gathering this information to apply for one or more of these is also a good assessment for us as a town, to see what we've done. Basically, if, even if we were unsuccessful in, in, in actually getting one of those awards, if, you know, it's an honor to be nominated and if you can see even how that goes with those luncheons and the dinners and things like that, it's an advertisement. And if you are somebody that would, that actually gets one of these, it's something you have forever. So, to me, it kind of went along with some of the other things that we've looked at for economic development, you know, brochures, all of these kind of things that we do. This is a huge accomplishment. The My Rewards program I just started, you know, since this is really the first one in the country, and I was kind of riving them, but I said, you know, if this becomes a pilot program, it could be taken nationwide and it would be, that is started in Fountain Hills. So, the Desert Peak, I mean, the Valley Forward Award, I would say if I was going to try to order them, is probably a really good one to try to pursue. The Desert Peaks, which is the MAGA award, is also, every year we see something, and they, they also have other aspects to them. And Mayor, you would probably be interested because there's some that have to do with art and you can, you can apply for awards that even have to do with public art. The Valley Metro Clean Air might not be something that would, we'd fit right into because it's mostly about air quality. And then the Earth Hour Challenge is another one that maybe isn't quite as likely, but I've actually had probably a dozen requests from people who are aware of it to ask us if we would look into it. All of these, we pretty much just missed, so it's not like a big rush or anything like that. The Valley Forward one, they just had the lunch and I think the, that the deadline is in July. So, I would really, again, if you see how this is stated, it's basically asking staff to research applying for them. I personally don't believe it would be burdensome at all and, and it goes along with some of our other strategic plans. So, I'd love to be able to go ahead and have us do that if, if you would all agree.
I'm wondering if, considering we have the limited amount of staff, perhaps we could do something like we did with the Republic Services, where we would have a staff member be point and we would have some residents on a committee to, to look into this. I'm not sure that we, we actually, I mean, I'll go to Ken on that. I'm not exactly sure we have the amount of staff to cover all of this type of research, but we probably do have a lot of residents with background that might be interested. Like, we have some, a fabulous committee that's working on the Republic Services grant.
We can certainly make the time for it if, if it's a priority of the council. Given the time, that, that, this is for next year, for that, so we can try to make sure that we can put those in there. If you want to have citizen committee help put that together, that was, that's been focused on some of these things, be happy to facilitate that as well.
Mayor, the idea of the, let's just take the Arizona Forward thing, I mean, the, it's a, it's an application. I, I don't think a citizen committee will know everything that we've actually done. I'm happy to share, and Raymond certainly knows, everything from the retrofits and, you know, the, the audit that we got all $140,000 to, to do, to our urban trails, to our new sidewalk projects. I don't know that a committee would necessarily be able to get there as quickly as probably we could get there. And so, I think if you look at that one in particular and you see what the requirements are, I don't think it would be overly burdensen, burdensome for us to do that. And I do see it as beyond just the scope of, of this one thing. I mean, it's a good...
It almost sounds like you're ready to head up the committee.
Well, Mayor, I, I have some information, I'm happy to work with you, but Da'Nett and they have all of that, the actual, the tonnage and the air pollution, all of the things that, and, and that would actually fall into the Peaks Award because those are public-private kind of things. And we have Republic, Town of Fountain Hills, that's another big thing, and that's a MAG thing, which I think is certainly appropriate for a town.
Okay, I don't want to put you on the spot, but would you be willing to help out since you've done all this research on it?
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. First in, first out?
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay. So, should I make a motion?
Sure.
I move that staff research opportunities for the town to apply for awards of recognition and environmental accomplishments and regional partnerships.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Nope. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
Okay. Ken, do you have anything else for us? No. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Quick question.
Yes.
Okay, so the town is going to be taking over...